Excellent. Oops, hang on. Dang it. There we go. All right. So, good evening. We're going to call to order the Monroe City Council Regular Business Meeting of Tuesday, March 25th. The time is 7:03 PM. Mayor Thomas went to Olympia today to testify on the Transportation House bill to include SR 522 on behalf of the city, and he will either, he will join us in a few moments, but until then, I will go ahead and do my job. So, tonight's roll call. Jody, will you take the roll call, please?
Thank you. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Fulcher, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough. For the record, Councilmember Gamble is attending remotely.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Scarborough, will you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. Tonight, we are having the first order of business is public comments. This is a limited opportunity for people to speak to the council during this council meeting. Pursuant to Council Rules of Procedure, oral public comment is limited to in-person comment only and must comply with the standards set forth in the Council Rules. Comments are limited to three minutes. Information on where to send the written comments is on tonight's agenda on the screen there. Do we have anybody signed up for our public comment? Thank you. All right. No one is speaking tonight. We will move on to our announcements and presentations. The next business item is item 5.1, the Municipal Court 2024 Annual Report with Judge Ness.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Make sure your mic is on.
Council Chair, is it on? Let me get up close, yeah. And council members, I'm Jessica Ness. I serve as a judge for Monroe Municipal Court. We have had an incredible year at the court for 2024, and I want to share with you a couple of the exciting highlights from our year. I'll start like I usually do, talking generally about the court, our caseloads, the work that we do, and then I want to take a deeper dive into our domestic violence program as well as our therapeutic court program. Next slide, please. Okay. Thank you, Jody. Monroe Municipal Court handles misdemeanors and gross misdemeanor charges as well as traffic infractions. Misdemeanor charges are those that are punishable by up to 90 days in jail, up to a $1,000 fine. Those are cases like disorderly conduct, shoplifting, driving on a suspended license in the third degree, and then gross misdemeanor charges are those that are punishable by up to a year in jail, up to a $5,000 fine. Those are crimes like driving under the influence or assault in the fourth degree. This pie chart reflects our case filings. As is typical in a municipal court, the greatest number of filings come by way of traffic infractions. And so you can see those on the green section of the chart as well as that purple section, the parking infractions. Those represent the infractions that we receive at the court. A recipient has an option to either pay for the infraction that they received, or they can request a mitigation hearing to reduce the dollar amount of the penalty, or they can ask to contest the infraction. So the other sections of the pie chart that I want to bring your attention to are the blue shaded part of the pie chart and the orange shaded part. These are divided into two categories of criminal non-traffic and criminal traffic. So these are the criminal filings that we receive at the court. And so in each category, there are both gross misdemeanor and misdemeanor charges. So, for example, in the criminal non-traffic category, you, it would include the charge of theft in the third degree, which is a gross misdemeanor, and also in the non-traffic category, you might see something like criminal trespass in the second degree that's considered a simple misdemeanor. And then the same with the other category. It's a mix of both gross misdemeanor and misdemeanor charges. So these numbers that I have here, they are pretty consistent with previous years, where we do see the majority of our criminal cases being filed as the criminal non-traffic category, which is those crimes that are person and property directed. Next slide, please. In that category of non-traffic crimes are cases of domestic violence. Intimate partner violence is the most violent crime that we see at Monroe Municipal Court. We started a program called Domestic Violence Moral Recognition Therapy, and I'll refer to it in my presentation tonight by that acronym DVMRT. And so I want you to know that there are still many courts in our state that do not offer this program yet. It really is a cutting-edge new tool for judges to use as a sentencing option. DVMRT is a treatment strategy that seeks to reduce recidivism by increasing moral reasoning. Individuals work their way through a workbook, and that's what's pictured there on the screen. It's called Bringing Peace to Relationships. It's a 24-week course. DV offenders confront their own issues of power and control in a group setting that is led by our probation counselor, Brad Cotton. We had four graduates the first year of the program, and this last year, in 2024, we had seven graduates of the program. One of the recent graduates that we had told us that the program helped him maintain his sobriety and that he was daily using the tools learned in the program. One of those tools is an acronym, and it's called AT REST, which stands for when I'm angry, take a timeout, relax, explain, stay calm, and think. He really worked the program, took it very seriously in the work that he did there, and because of that, he shared with us that he was later able to reconnect with his wife and with his children through that program. All right, let's go on to the next slide and turn to the therapeutic court program. Monroe Municipal Court was established in 2022. It is an innovative approach to respond to low-level quality-of-life crimes. Community court participants are required at entry to be evaluated for substance use disorder and then to engage with our local resources. Those include, in the bubbles here on the screen, mental health treatment, housing, basic needs, education, vital documents, state benefits. There are a number of different resources that we offer through the program. Our community court team assesses each participant's needs, and our hope is, and what our data shows us, is that individuals who have access to resources will be less likely to commit another criminal offense. Data tracking from the therapeutic court's inception demonstrates a recidivism rate of 87%. The national average, just so that you're aware, is about 58%. This is a way to end the cycle of this revolving door that we often see where a person is cited for criminal charge, jail time, and then released. So by intercepting a person to address the underlying issue, the why of criminal conduct, we have the opportunity to stop the revolving door. Next slide, please. And so I would love to share with you two stories where our program did successfully intercept a person in this fashion, and the first is Carmella. Carmella had been in and out of the court system for a number of years. She was in the court system this time on the gross misdemeanor charge of theft. We learned that Carmella's struggle was primarily with mental health. A primary driver of that struggle was from unresolved grief from the loss of her son. At one hearing, she told us that the pain of the loss was so great that she often told herself that her son was just over at a friend's house and would be back in the morning. We were able to connect Carmella to mental health services, including a grief group. She completed a theft awareness class. She was also a domestic violence survivor, and we were able to connect her with some local resources. She also did complete above the community service requirement that we have for each participant in the program. And this element of the program is an opportunity for a person to understand that their criminal conduct has damaged or harmed the community in some way, and so it's their opportunity to pay back, to give back to the community. This is commonly referred to as restorative justice. Carmella did surpass all of the requirements of the program. At her graduation, she told us that the program changed her life, that the program was a blessing, that she'd wished, that she'd had this opportunity sooner in life. She told me that there was a greater need for more treatment courts like ours and encouraged me to leave no one behind. Next slide, please. And then I do want to briefly share with you Brandon's story. He's on the Zoom screen. He's in that larger picture on the left-hand side, and I'll tell you that many of you probably saw Brandon on the streets of Monroe, but you wouldn't recognize him today. Through the assistance of social worker Delgado with the police department, she's also pictured there, she was able to help Brandon get an assessment, obtain inpatient treatment, and then secure clean and sober housing in Everett. He continues to work his outpatient program, and he's also very active in the Recovery Cafe in Everett. He has a really bright future. Success in community court creates a ripple effect. It transforms one person, it transforms a group, it transforms a community, and it has the power to transform society at large. Treatment courts are considered the most successful justice intervention for people with mental health and substance abuse disorder. This type of compassionate justice can help lead people with mental health and substance use disorder into lives of stability, health, and recovery. Treatment courts not only have the ability to make communities safer, they also save taxpayer dollars. Numbers published by All Rise, which is a leader in the treatment court movement, shows that the average tax dollar saved per participant is $6,000. Next slide, please. Our program is funded through state dollars. For the past three years, I have applied for, and the court has received state funding for the therapeutic court. The chart there on the left reflects the total of those grants, so from January of 2022 through June 30th of 2025, I am hopeful that there will be another opportunity for us to apply for additional funding. And as you can see from the chart, the largest portion of the funding is allocated towards personnel, and so that includes all of the time of our court team, so the judge's time, our program coordinator, court administrator, prosecutor, and public defender. A condition of our state funding last year in 2024 did include hosting a program analyst from the state for our community court. And she interviewed our court team, she reviewed all of our legal documents, and observed it turned into a very long community court session. Part of her duties require her to travel around the state and evaluate these programs and ensure that state funding is being appropriately utilized. She told us that she'd never seen a program like ours. She was impressed with the number of resources in the community, the structure of the program, and the compassionate engagement of the court team with participants. So council members, Mayor Pro Tem, Council Chair, without your support, the court would not be able to provide these life-changing, community-focused, tax-dollar-saving programs. So on behalf of the court and our program participants, you have my heartfelt thanks and appreciation. That's it. Thanks, Jody. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Judge Ness. Councilmembers, does anyone have any questions for the judge? Oh, there he goes, Councilmember Fisher.
I'm ready to do what other people are gonna do. No questions, just continue. Thank you for all of your work organizing this whole thing, orchestrating this thing. Again, we were just kind of looking at each other, and it's amazing that our little town of Monroe seems to really be leading the way with this, and that's why I'm always confident when we are approaching it the Monroe way, that we get a lot of things done, we do the most good that we can for the people here. So, thanks for being on our team, I really appreciate it, and all of your staff as well. It's quite a program, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Hanford, you are next.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Yes, Judge Ness, can't say how much I appreciate the work that you do, the common sense approach that as part of the team, the city, the town, that we take all the way from the street, the social worker embedded in, with the police officers, all the way through to when they see you, and this restorative justice, and just the stories, keep telling them, keep up the great work. Thank you.
Well said, Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Walker.
I had the pleasure of attending one of the community court sessions a month or two ago, and it was absolutely fantastic. I can only wish that more people in our community could see how innovative and important the work that you're doing is. Thank you truly from all of us for the work that you and Pam and Sherry and the rest of your entire team are doing, because it's a team effort on those calls, and I was just, one of the biggest takeaways for me is the kind of hope that you could see in a lot of the participants, and I think there was one comment from a person, like, "It's weird to see my prosecutor and my defender in the same room trying to help me." And it's just so special, I couldn't recommend more of you, check it out if you haven't already. Thank you for all the work you're putting into the continued grant funding for the court as well. Yeah, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walker. Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you so much. I echo what everyone has already said, just so proud within our community to have these services and have you and your team. It's just a huge feather in our cap when we meet with other cities and communities that hear about what we're doing, and we're just very, very proud. I was trying to think of something different I could say, so I'm going to pull out from your wonderful report, the fact that you mentioned what your team does in the community. So we have Pam is in Kiwanis. I think it's Shaleen, is that how you pronounce her name? She's a member of SAR. We have Brad Cotton, who's active in his church, and, you know, Tim is a civil service commissioner, Sherry, and, you know, organizes a fundraising event to help families in need, and then all this information about you, I'd love to know where you, assistant coach for a local middle school, track and field, but I really love that because it shows that you're all well-rounded people and you're out in the community doing other good things, but you bring all of that experience and that well-rounded approach to what you're doing in this endeavor, and I love that, and I do want to know where you coach, because I'm a coach, too.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Beaumont, would you like to answer that question, Judge Ness? All right, we'll leave that for later. Okay, and last but not least, unless Councilmember Gamble hops on board, Councilmember Scarborough.
Well, I didn't want you to think that I didn't care, but instead of saying it again, everything everybody said, ditto. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Well, and as a council member, I am also going to say, I just love, as Kyle said, he said, "It's the Monroe way," and we have truly made a mark in how well our entire system deals with people who just need help, and so thank you for being the leader in that, and thank you for all you do. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so that is the end of our presentation for 5.1, but Mayor Thomas has now entered the room, so I'm going to relinquish the helm here, and you'll hear a momentary pause while we switch commanders.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem, and for the record, I was listening on the way in, and I do really appreciate the presentation, all the comments from the council members, and again, thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem, Fulcher, for taking care of this. I do need an agenda so I can cross things off as we go. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. This is item 6.1, public hearing, 60% petition for the Connor annexation with our senior planner, Bright. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna share my screen in just a moment. First of all, I'd like to enter an item into the record. I believe Clark Wykoff passed them out. It's just attachment one to the agenda packet, it was, sorry, inadvertently left out, it's the signature pages. So you may recall, at the February 22nd, 2022, city council meeting, city council established pre-annexation zoning for the Connor site, as this site did not have a land use designation on our now previous future land use map. So essentially, the yellow triangle that you see on the screen was unintentionally left off the future land use map, and so city council established the lowest density residential of R4 per the Monroe Municipal Code. So it should be noted that in the most recent comprehensive plan update, the map now correctly depicts the property as the residential one designation, which is the lowest single-family land use designation. So the process for this annexation has spanned over two years, and as you may be aware, the city of Monroe and Snohomish County do not have a valid MAILA, so that's the master interlocal annexation agreement. So in lieu of this agreement, the applicant, actually, pause, I'm reading the wrong script here, I'm sorry, so the applicant, John Connor, submitted his 10% annexation petition to the city on February 28th, 2022, and at the April 26th, 2022, city council meeting, the date was set for the initial meeting. So the initial meeting was held on May 10th, 2022, and council passed resolution 2022-012, accepting the notice of intention to commence annexation. So this resolution set the boundaries for the annexation area, it required indebtedness, and directed the applicant to move forward with the collection of signatures for the 60% petition. I'm gonna move back one slide and finish this here, I apologize, I got out of order. So the process of this annexation has spanned over two years. The city and county and the applicant have worked closely with each other over the past two years to ensure that the annexation meets the county's standards for annexation in lieu of that master interlocal agreement. One area of discussion was over the right-of-way boundary for the annexation area. As you can see, the property, which is the smaller triangle at the bottom right of the screen, it immediately is adjacent to Tester Road, and Tester Road is immediately adjacent to SR 522. So there was many discussions back and forth over where the annexation boundary should lie. Ultimately, the map that you see on the screen is what the county and the applicant and the city agreed to. Then the 60% petition was circulated, and 100% of the property owners, which is one property owner, signed the petition, and public notice for this public hearing was duly noted, noticed per the city's code, and no public comments were received. Next steps, if the council approves the 60% petition, then staff will forward the items to the, well, notice of intention will be submitted to the boundary review board, and they have 45 days to review that notice of intention, and then council can take action to finalize the annexation. The requested action is on the screen tonight, but I'm here for any questions that you may have, and also the property owner is here in the audience, and he's available for any questions as well.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we're gonna go ahead, first ask the council, do you have any questions for clarification before I open up the public hearing? All right, saying none, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the council on this matter? Okay, nobody signed up. Anybody in the audience that didn't sign up that would like to speak on the matter? Okay, saying none, I'll turn to the council. Council, any further questions or a motion? Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, did you close the hearing yet?
Well, I was just gonna say, I should first close the hearing, so unless there's objection, we will now close the hearing.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, there is no objection, therefore, the hearing is closed, so Councilmember Hanford, thank you.
Thank you. I move to accept the 60% petition for the Connor annexation and authorize staff to submit a notice of intention for annexation of the Snohomish County Boundary Review Board. BRB.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Walker for the requested action that is currently showing on the screen, any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, that would be the consent agenda, and I turn to the council. Councilmember Beaumont, you're closest to the flag.
Thank you. I move to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet.
I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Scarborough, any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is final action, resolution number 2025-00, adopting the city's new brand guidelines and Administrator Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. The action in front of you is to approve resolution number 2025-008, adopting the city of Monroe's brand guidelines in alignment with the city's vision statement, Imagine Monroe. Just as a reminder to council and members of the public who may not have been tracking, Monroe's been working on a comprehensive branding initiative to align with its public image and with the new city's vision statement, Imagine Monroe. This effort was driven by the need to create a cohesive and consistent representation of Monroe across all of the city's communications and assets. There was a collaborative process involving a community- a collaborative process involving community engagement and stakeholder input throughout the process. The city developed a brand voice and the design guidelines that are in your packet this evening that reflect Monroe's values, goals, and aspirations. The branding guide will, the new branding will guide all future communications, marketing efforts, visual identity elements, ensuring a unified approach that resonates with residents, businesses, and visitors. The brand design guidelines establish a standardized approach for the city logos, typography, color palettes, imagery, and is intended to enhance city recognition and presence across multiple platforms and social media. With approval of the resolution, this will allow then city staff to begin the rollout, which is planned to be done in phases, starting with the lowest cost and easiest items to do, which are those things that are already in electronic format, so our signatures, our social media, our website, all of those things that can be changed out relatively quickly at the lowest possible cost. The next rollout then will be those things as supplies are depleted, so those will be items such as our brochures, our marketing materials, our printed materials, our envelopes, our utility billing, those things will then be done next. And then finally last, the things that are the bigger ticket items, the decals on sides of vehicles and other items will be done over the next couple of years. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions that council might have, and looking for a motion to approve resolution 2025-008.
Thank you. And just for the record, when I was reading the agenda, it said 2025-00. That's what threw me. It says 008, and I just want to make certain the record is corrected on that. Councilmember Beaumont, I think I saw your flag go up. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, you can be sure that I read every word of this, because this is what I do for a living, and I've got to say that they knocked it out of the park. Absolutely fantastic job. I think it is setting a guide, a trail of breadcrumbs for years to come. There is absolutely no question of what our tone is, how to handle grammar, what our guidelines are for social media. I mean, it is absolutely all there. It is 100% fantastic to have this as a guide going forward. We will no longer have mismatched communications, mismatched signage and logos. It's all right there. So unless we have people that want to comment on this, I'm happy to make the motion.
Well, you have the floor, you can go ahead and make the motion.
I move to approve resolution number 2025-008, adopting the city of Monroe's brand guidelines in alignment with the city's vision statement, Imagine Monroe.
I have a motion from councilmember Beaumont, a second from councilmember Hanford for the requested action. 8.1, final action that's shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much, everybody. And thank you, staff, for all the work on this. I know it was a long project, a lot of community involvement, and really looking forward to seeing the new brand implemented. Thank you.
Yes, I appreciate that, because I would be remiss if I didn't thank city staff as well. So we had a number of people internally, Katie Darro, Commander Paul Ryan, Celine, and others, who took a lot of time and energy to review everything and provide input throughout the entire process. So I just want to thank city staff as well for all the work that they did. This was definitely a team effort. I think it actually started with Rich Heubner, and then was handed off to Becky Hassert, and then finally came back to me to take across the finish line. So a lot of staff members involved.
I'll just go ahead and say, also, we really appreciate the work of our consultant,
Jay Ray.
Jay Ray that they did with this, so thank you, everybody. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's new, I'm sorry, unfinished business item, 9.1, interim R7 zoning ordinance with Planner Marrero. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here to present the interim R7 zoning ordinance, proposed amendments to Chapter 22.16 MMC, single-family residential zoning districts, and Chapter 22.42 MMC design standards. This interim ordinance allows townhomes in the R7 zoning district with associated development regulations. Currently, only detached dwelling units and duplexes are allowed in R7. This interim ordinance meets the city's housing goals and visions for middle housing. Imagine Monroe states, where we can find everything we need with regional connections with a variety of choices for work, housing, dining, shopping, arts, and activities. This ordinance also aligns with the goals of the housing element of the updated 2044 Comprehensive Plan. Goal 6.1 encourages a diversity of housing types in Monroe, and there's also policies that support middle housing, and that's the intent of this interim ordinance. This is a zoning map of the citywide rezone, and the yellow areas indicate the R7 zoning district, and these are the areas that townhomes would be permitted. An introduction was given to council on March 11th, 2025. This interim ordinance is needed for the Monroe 30 annexation development to move forward, and it is also beneficial to some other potential developments in the city that would like to do townhome developments. We are using the interim ordinance process because it allows the city to adopt the ordinance now, while staff works on the middle housing code that will ultimately allow other housing options besides just townhomes. The proposed code sections include amendments to Section 22.16.030, which adds a P for permitted use to the land use table for attached dwelling unit in the R7 zoning district, and this is Exhibit A of your agenda packet. It also amends Section 22.16.040, which adds a column for attached dwelling units to the bulk requirements table, and this is for lot dimensions, setbacks, lot coverage, density, et cetera. This also adds a new section to the chapter for design standards, which is 22.42, and this new section will add design standards for townhome development, which is Exhibit C of the agenda packet. So I do have an update for the council tonight. The Phase 1 Code Cleanup Ordinance that was approved and adopted in January of this year, it was just codified online today. So the code sections that are in Exhibit A and B do not reflect those updated changes. There was a little overlap in the code amendments, so I was using the current code that was online at the time. So we just want to make sure that adopting this interim ordinance does not invalidate the Phase 1 code amendments. And so basically, all this is doing is just making sure that the codes align to what was already approved in January of this year. And then, I just wanted to assure you that nothing has changed from the last time I brought this R7 zoning district code to you. It's still the same thing as far as allowing townhomes in R7, and then putting all those development requirements and standards. So just wanted to give you that update. But I'd be happy to answer any questions I may have regarding those changes. So the recommended action today is to move to adopt ordinance number 002/2025, adopting interim zoning amendments to Chapter 22.16 MMC, single-family residential zoning districts, and Chapter 22.42MMC design standards, designating townhomes as a permitted use in the R7 zoning district, together with associated development regulations, setting forth supportive findings requiring a post-adoption public hearing, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Marrero, for the report and for the heads-up about the need to waive the rules of procedure this evening. I move to waive council rules of procedure requiring two readings of an ordinance.
I have a motion from councilmember Hanford, a second from councilmember Fisher to move the rules of procedure as stated. Any discussion on the matter? Go ahead, councilmember Walker.
Just so we're clear for the public that might watch this, the reason that we are waiving council rules of procedure is because we've already adopted this change, or it is coming, but we are going to adopt it in the interim now because it is needed for a few projects to advance.
That is correct. Yes, while working on a permanent ordinance, that is correct.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business, yep. Oh yeah, let's do that. Yeah, because they just waived the rules of procedure, not having to approve it, yeah. Okay, thanks, Jody. Yeah. Okay, how about another motion? Anybody interested? Councilmember Hanford.
I move to adopt ordinance number 002-2025, adopting interim zoning amendments to Chapter 22.16 MMC, single-family residential zoning districts, and Chapter 22.16 MMC design standards, designating townhomes as a permitted use in the R7 zoning district, together with associated development regulations, setting forth supportive findings requiring a post-adoption public hearing, providing for severability and establishing effective date.
I have a motion made from councilmember Hanford, a second from councilmember Fisher for the requested action number two, shown in the agenda, now that I'm looking at that. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, councilmember Walker, I should have accepted the decat when offered and not stuck with the caffeinated. Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Also wanted, for clarification for the public, at a previous meeting, we discussed is there, there's either legislation that's been passed, or there is something coming down the line, maybe from the county, that is going to require this change to R7 in the future?
So, yes, there's Houseville, 1110. Monroe's not required to because of the size of the city, but we are being proactive in, because we're anticipating sometime in the future that we will be required to do a middle housing code.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
Yeah, can we confirm that it was read correctly, that you referred to Chapter 22.42 and not 46? Was it read correctly? I'm not sure I heard it correct.
One moment. So, Chapter 22.46, one moment. So I see 22.16 on the screen, and then the second one is Chapter 22.16.
Mayor, if I could, I read it directly off the paper, so this is incorrect.
Correct. So here's the thing we want to clarify. Councilmember Hanford read directly off the agenda, and the agenda for the second citation says Chapter 22.16 MMC. Thanks to councilmember Scarborough, who did have his caffeine this evening and is using it appropriately, he noticed that the slide is 22.42. So just confirming that the slide is correct as opposed to the agenda? Should it be 22.42 or 22.16?
Yes, it should be 22.42.
Okay.
There's two, there's two separate.
Correct.
It could be, it could be incorrect on the agenda, but the slide is correct.
Slide is correct, okay. So just to be, just to be extra clear, I would like to have somebody make an amendment to change the second Chapter 22.16 that councilmember Hanford read in to Chapter 22 point, I'm sorry, to Chapter 22.42 as shown on the screen. Do I have a, so moved? So moved?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Beaumont. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second from councilmember Scarborough. Okay, so the motion that was made with the 22.16 for the second 22.16 is now amended to be 22.42 as shown on the screen. We're going to vote on that now. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, now, the, what's shown on the screen is the motion. Now I turn to the council. Thank you, councilmember Scarborough. It's a land use matter, and I want to make sure, it's correct. Any discussion on the motion? All right, saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Folks, I know there's a lot of technical stuff I went through, but because this is a land use matter, I really want to make certain it's done correctly, and so that's why we did the amendment. So, I don't know. I don't know. I suspect Zach could tell me we could do it another way, but I would prefer that we do it that way. So thank you. All right. And we took care of all the motions now under unfinished business, right? Kevin left. He was the one that helped me with that. All right. New business item number 10.1, 2025, Human Services Community Needs Assessment. At least we have the sharp eyes of councilmember Scarborough over here. Rachel, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Monroe City Council members, pleasure to be here with you tonight to discuss our upcoming need to redo a community needs assessment that will help inform the next four years of funding and policy decisions, and help to identify the progress that we've made since 2021, and what the new gaps and barriers are that we can continue to work on. So in 2021, the city of Monroe hired a dedicated consultant that worked collaboratively with staff and local service providers to identify the gaps and barriers to services. This year, in order to reduce cost, the Community Human Services Advisory Board is recommending that the city council amend our consultant Caitlin Harrigan's contract to include some additional tasks that would allow her to perform the majority of the 2025 Community Needs Assessment, and also negotiate a contract with a public outreach consultant to assist with the primary qualitative data collection. And the reason we're hoping to work with an outreach consultant is because we want to maintain objectivity in our focus groups and with our key informant interviews, so that they can speak freely to a consultant that isn't as associated with the city as Caitlin has become with her work as an intern now and as a consultant, or as an intern before and as a consultant now. So if the city council approves the Community Human Service Advisory Board's recommendation, staff will proceed to execute the contracts following the city's procurement policies, and ongoing updates about the needs assessment will be included in the Human Services Department work reports. This approach would decrease costs and allow the city to reallocate funding into other services, such as maintaining our peer outreach support and case management contracts into 2026. Preliminary, preliminary budget assumptions are anticipating about a $5,640 amendment to Ms. Harrigan's contract, and the estimate for the outreach consultant and participant incentives would be about $45,000. There's currently $100,000 in the '25-'26 budget to update the Community Needs Assessment, and with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
All right, I turn to the council. Any questions or a motion?
I am a little confused. So the request tonight is to increase the contract value. It is not to fund anything, it's not to fund a new needs assessment, it's not to fund more peer outreach or case management. It is just to add that increase in contract?
It's to allow us to amend the current consultant's contract and negotiate another contract with a public outreach consultant to assist in updates to the Community Needs Assessment. Because there's $100,000 in the budget that's budgeted towards this endeavor, the decrease in cost will also hopefully fund peer outreach support and case management. So it's actually all of those things that you just mentioned.
Councilmember Walker? Oh wait, okay, councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you. I had the same question as councilmember Walker, so he already asked just for some clarification in how this was written. It sounds like this is just basically moving some money around where we can do the best, have the most impact with the budget that we have, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Folcher? You must became councilmember Walker.
I actually had been a Walker before. I didn't like it. So anyway. I think this is good use of the people we have already on staff. So have we had a person made, do you need, yes, you do need a motion from us. I don't have anything in front of me.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I'd go with the slide tonight.
Okay, I'm gonna go with the slide. No, I'm just gonna go with the slide. There you go.
So with that, I'm going to move to approve the Community Human Services Advisory Board recommendation to amend contract number 2025-001 with Caitlin Harrigan to include the 2025 Community Needs Assessment in the scope of work and negotiate a contract with a public outreach consultant to assist with the primary qualitative data collection. Decaf, excellent.
Yes, good.
Second.
Tammy needs caffeine. Okay.
I really do.
All right, so first, a motion from Councilmember Fulter, and second from Councilmember Beaumont, AKA Heather and Tammy. Any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
Still a little confused. Can you walk it through a little bit more? Because I read it, when I read it, I was like, gosh, it's still not making any sense to me, even though I had a few days to think about it. So are we spending more money? Or is it staying the same and just being reallocated?
Yes, so we are reducing the amount of the budgeted $100,000 that will be actually spent towards the Community Needs Assessment because we're going to amend Caitlin's scope of work to include critical parts of the Community Needs Assessment. And then with the leftover part of that funding that was budgeted towards the Community Needs Assessment, we can fund other parts of the Human Services program.
So more like just kind of keeping it more in-house?
Yeah.
Okay. Unless you want to go without house. When you said in-house, I'm just saying.
It completely depends.
All right. Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
I'm sorry, I, I did get decaf too. So I'm, I'm having trouble after the "and" on the requested action, "and negotiate a contract with a public outreach consultant." Should I understand it as the "and" is just adding another bullet point of scope of work?
Yeah, no. So we're gonna amend Caitlin's contract to include the 2025 Community Needs Assessment data collection that's going to be more numeric, and the outreach consultant is going to do more of the qualitative data, which is going to be like the interviews part. So they're gonna do the focus groups and the key informant interviews with our service providers. The reason we really want to maintain objectivity with the service providers is we want them to be able to say everything that they need to say to someone who's taking in that information. And they might feel that they can't say everything that they need to say to someone who's associated so closely with city staff.
If I understood your question correctly, Jake, the answer is yes. The "and" is two separate actions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the first action is to have Caitlin do work that we would have gone out of house with. And then the second one is we will go out of house for the public outreach consultant.
Correct.
There you go.
That is perfect, and I do want to state.
I'm sorry if I misunderstood you.
You're, you're good, and I think Caitlin is doing amazing work.
Yes.
The five, the, the extension of the contract, when we're talking about the $100,000 that was dedicated in the budget for the Community Needs Assessment. So we're going to take that, that increase in contract out of that $100,000.
Yep.
And then you said that there's also going to be money within that $100,000 that we're going to put towards case management, pure outreach?
There's going to be money left over in what we budgeted for the Community Needs Assessment. So with those funds, we could consider, and it would probably come back to you as a mid-buy adjustment or something to that effect, moving that money over into continuing those contracts in 2026.
And the part, what's leading to the fact that there's going, going to be an overage that we could use to reassign to those things is because we are transferring the quantitative work of the needs assessment to Ms. Harrigan?
Yes.
Okay.
We're saving money. We'll have money left over, and we're hoping to use the money for something else in Human Services.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm for more work by Caitlin too, so.
Thank you.
I, I would love after that to see more money dedicated to the, the pure outreach and case, case management aspect.
Great.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry for all the questions.
No problem.
No, no, questions are good. Want to make certain everybody understands. Okay, any other questions or discussion on the motion? Because we do have a motion, right? Yes.
Yes.
All right. Yes, all right. Saying no other questions, we will, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Keep forgetting about that. All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is new business item number 10.2, Case Management Specialist Contract 2025-045. Again, Rachel Adams.
All right, on October 24th of this, of 2024, the city council approved a contract for case management services to continue. That was not executed by our original contractor, St. Vincent de Paul, and the city ended up releasing an RFP on February 5th for case management services. The RFP then closed on February 26th. The city received applications from Take the Next Step, Conquer, and Ideal Option. And the Community Human Services Advisory Board met to evaluate these three proposals and make their recommendation. And they're recommending that the city council award the case management specialist contract to Take the Next Step and authorize the mayor to sign and execute contract number 2025-045. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. My turn to the council. Any questions or motion? Councilmember Beaumont. I'm watching for hands going toward flags.
I move to approve the Community Human Services Advisory Board recommendation to award the case management specialist contract to Take the Next Step and authorize the mayor to sign and execute contract 2025-045.
Hanford seconds.
I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Hanford. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Buttons getting worn down. So there is money that is now going, it's not going to be used. It was going to be used by St. Vincent de Paul before they closed and didn't use the funds. There is some important kind of case management work that's been happening with that contract through St. Vincent de Paul, if I understand it correctly. So those that are still operating through that contract will see their funds stop after this, this change?
No.
Okay. People that are contracted through St. Vincent de Paul. Okay. I think I remember the answer to my question now. Never mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Fulter.
I do have a question. I don't know how this affects us as a city, but there is an executive order from the federal level that says there are two sexes. And we have on page 16 of this contract, male, female, and non-binary. And I don't know how we're going to address that. Just a question. Anyone?
I don't have an answer to that, Mayor, or Deborah. Do you want advice?
I don't, I don't see the need to amend the contract to change that.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions? We have a motion on the table. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call. What's that? Yeah, it was Hanford. First, I think, was Beaumont, second was Hanford. All right, any, no discussion on the motion? We're gonna go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Councilmember Gamble, I didn't hear an opposed, and I didn't hear your yes. Just confirm you're still there and you're a yes.
There is no vote, then it goes as a yes, right? Isn't that the rule? I was trying to save you, I was trying to save you the freakout because you kept getting weirded out by my voice coming through the speaker, so I was trying to save you.
No, I, I'm, I'm actually looking for it because you've been really good about saying aye. It's just there's a little delay, so.
Well, I just, I was like, you know, I don't need to say it. It's assumed if I don't answer. So there you go.
All right, sounds good. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business item number 10.3. That's Flex Funding Administration Contract Number 2025-046. Rachel Adams.
All right, so on January 8th, 2025, CHSAB recommended that council approve $15,000 of Human Services Award funding for a request for a proposal for an organization to provide basic needs flex funding attached to case management. City council approved and released an RFP on, and we released the RFP on January 28th. On, and then the... Oh, I'm sorry. City council approved of a release of an RFP on January 28th. So the request for a proposal was released on February 5th and closed on February 26th. The city received only one application from Take the Next Step. The Community Needs, the Community Human Services Advisory Board reviewed this application at their March 5th regular meeting and determined that the application did meet the criteria for funding and is recommending that city council award the contract for Flex Funding Administration to Monroe's Family Resource Center, Take the Next Step. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. My turn to the council. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question on page 240 of 425 on the PDF. It says, must have approval in writing from the city to exceed $500 a month in flex funding on any one individual. And I'm just curious, who at the city has the authority to give that approval in writing?
That would be me.
Good. And is there, has that happened before with other in the past?
Yep.
Okay. And is there, do you report that out to someone else? Or like, I'm just looking for the accountability part. I trust you.
Yeah, no, so.
But if you're gone and there's somebody else.
Yep, so in order for them to be reimbursed for those expenses, they have to then submit their reimbursement request with supporting documents and receipts. So I would go ahead and approve the expense, and they would submit their receipts that would then be approved by myself and Deborah and our finance department.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or motion? Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
So when the proposal, or the request for a proposal was sent out, there was one applicant looking at the amounts payable, $25,000 out of the $29,960, so $30,000, $25,000 of it is going towards personnel. $5,000 is going towards flex funding, and this is a grant for flex funding?
That's on, um...
It's on page 17. I see that. I see that. You know what happened is I attached the wrong contract to this. So this is for the case management specialists. My apologies. So this is on the, the cover page, the contract that is attached to your agenda bill is for case management services, and that's why it says it includes personnel. The contract for flex funding is very, very similar, and all $15,000 will go towards flex funding. Nothing will go towards personnel. Nothing will go towards overhead. It will all go towards flex funding.
So Rachel, they don't have the document before them here?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any reason why we can't wait until the next council meeting to have? Right, so that they can review it? Is there any reason why we can't wait until the next council meeting to, so that the council has adequate time to review it? I'd prefer that they have time to review it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Why don't we, why don't we go ahead and bring it back, bring it back on to the business to the, or unfinished to the, to the next meeting? And then like that, if there are questions, they can follow up. Otherwise, they can go ahead and just do approval. Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and we'll bring this back to the next council meeting. I want to make certain you've got the right documents, unless there's a compelling interest, and I, I think that it sounds like we can wait a couple weeks. All right? So unless there's an objection, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. Before I do that, were there any other questions that are like big scope questions about that particular one that you might want questions answered for? One alternative I could offer is you could send an email to her, and she could be prepared to respond. Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
Yep, all right, thank you, Rachel. All right, next item on the agenda is, and I'm pausing because there's a typo here. I just need to make certain I read the right one in. So I'm, I'm excited that this item is coming before you. This is something that the chief and I talked about, about, probably about two years ago.
At least.
Yeah. Yeah, about two years ago. And so this is resolution number 2025-007, declaring Flock camera, declaring Flock Safety as a sole source provider for Flock Safety Automatic License Plate Readers, or ALPR, cameras and software, and authorizing the mayor or designated to execute a purchase. Chief Jolly.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. As the mayor stated, that this is something that's been in the works for a couple of years, and one thing or another has always come up or been an obstacle. But with his drive and support and your approval, we have added this into the 2025-2026 budget, and it is funded. However, we do need to overcome the obstacle that it is a sole source. They're the only people that has a product like this. In a minute, I'd like to invite a couple representatives from Flock that should be in Netherland out there. Garrett Thomson and Kristen Cloud from Flock will be our subject matter experts to speak on this. The policy considerations that we're looking at and getting your approval for sole source are captured in RCW Chapter 39, which is mentioned in the agenda bill that allows governments to waive competitive bidding if the purchase is clearly and legitimately limited to a single supplier, which this product is. And if you have subsequent questions, they'll be able to answer those. Also captured in the City of Monroe's procurement policy, it gives the council, excuse me, the authority as the ones to be able to do that. And so that's why we were coming before you. Just a short description before I turn it over. Flock safety products support police operations and investigations. Approval of the sole source resolution will allow the police department to adopt technology that will increase its efficiency in areas where criminal activity is occurring, put officers in those locations, and solve more crimes. One thing that you might be able to relate to is sometime back, we had a smash and grab at Armageddon Arms in which a stolen vehicle was driven into our city. Another vehicle was used to breach the front doors, and subsequently several firearms were taken. With a system such as this, it would recognize the vehicle coming into the city and alert the officers before any crime was committed as a stolen vehicle, and the officers could start intercepting and throwing these people off track and possibly at least deterring them, but possibly arresting them before a crime could happen. This is invaluable in a number of ways.[1690.83] This is invaluable in a number of ways. That's again, to refresh your memories, why I brought our Flock representatives with us.
We're gonna hold on bringing them forward.
You're going to hold?
Yes. So, council, let me explain, this is coming forward for your consideration for sole source supplier. So, therefore, they're criteria that we just need to demonstrate for you that they're the only ones that can provide this service. Learning from the past, we had somebody come forward who was essentially entering into a contract with the council who spoke from the table. My preference, if it's okay with council, is to not have Flock come forward while you're considering this at some point. If, if you do approve this, Flock would come and probably give you a presentation about, you know, about their services and everything, but my preference is that you are making a choice not based on the presentation tonight, but based on the fact that we're asking you to consider this a sole source provider because there's no other vendor that can provide this service. Does that make sense? I don't want them coming before and making an argument that, that, you know, before you that they are the sole source. I'd like you to make that determination based on what staff has provided to you rather than having them come forward and make that argument. Okay? So, chief, that, that's the reason why I'm making the request. The nature of this system, as you've pointed out first, there's no other person, no other company that can provide this service.
It's a unique system that partners with Axon, which is another technology leader in law enforcement field and this is the product that's available to us at this time.
And one of the things that I see that this system will do is it not only will allow us to have a license plate that is, that is associated with a certain level of crime be flagged and us be notified, but it will also act as a deterrent. So, part of this is that when people who would do crime understand that we have a Flock camera system here in our city, there's less of a likelihood that they will want to drive through our city and that there are a lot of cities that have the Flock camera system. Is that correct, chief?
Yes.
Around the region, including in Snohomish County and King County?
There are.
Okay. And so, again, unless the council has other thoughts, I would rather you be making a decision based on the criteria for sole source. So, I'm gonna go ahead with Councilmember Scarborough and then Councilmember Walker. Councilmember Scarborough.
Since this is a, we've, we've decided just to do this on sole source for the first step of this, the second step, my question would be how it works, so we would save that for the further.
Correct. Yep. Right now, the question before you, is this a sole source contract? And if the answer is yes, then, then that's where we would contract with them, they would come back. Councilmember Walker.
I'm really excited about this. Thank you, chief and mayor for working to, to make it happen. I'd like to make or move to adopt resolution twenty-two-five zero zero seven, naming Flock Safety as the sole supplier of Flock Camera System hardware and software products.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Walker, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for requested action number one. Up above, any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a second motion for your consideration. Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
I'd like to move to authorize the mayor designee to execute the purchase of Flock Safety Camera System hardware and software products as quoted to the Monroe Police Department.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Walker, a second from Councilmember Beaumont for item number two, under requested action, any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough.
I'm wondering if we got the cart before the horse, but I'm not against the, the motion, but if, it's asking us to go ahead and buy it tonight.
I'm noticing that, yes.
We're not down to the part where how much it costs yet, so.
Understood. So, at this point in time, we think this through, so moved operators to execute the purchase, okay.
Contract is attached.
Yeah, the contract is attached. So, chief, go ahead.
It is in the agenda packet, you guys have approved it as part of the budget. It is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. That includes the platform for one year as well as a one-time fee. There's a lot of insulation, installation that goes along with this and then the subsequent years are sixty-six thousand dollars.
Any other questions, Councilmember Scarborough? All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna make sure that I was reading that correctly because I saw that, but for the annual cost of the city after a first year is sixty-six thousand, is that still considered already in your budget? So, it's not.
Yes, that's.
Something we have to come up with.
That's correct.
Okay.
For the next two years.
Thank you.
Is the council comfortable with the description in the pack and the description that the chief has already provided to make a decision on number two? Okay. Okay, because this is one, now that you've made a decision on number one, you, at this point in time, if you wanted to, to hear from the vendor, we could certainly entertain that, but again, I wanted you to make a decision on number one before moving on to number, item, the second item, so. Okay. Seeing no concerns, there's a motion on the table and there was a second. Just to clarify, there was a motion and a second, right? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, saying none. For requested action number two, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes seven to zero with the understanding that Councilmember Gamble has voted in favor. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, chief. All right, next item on the agenda is item, new business item number ten point five, resolution number twenty-two-five double oh five, amending travel policies in resolution number twenty-two-five zero zero six, amending incurring expenses while conducting city personal, city business policies, sorry, with Administrator Knight.
As the mayor stated, the motion in front of you is to approve two resolutions, one which would repeal and update the city's existing finance policies titled the Travel Status Policy. So, this is the policy that we use in order to establish the city's policies around funding travel for city representatives, which include city council members, city staff and others such as appointed officials. And a second resolution to, which is resolution number twenty-two-five dash zero zero six, which would repeal and replace the city's existing finance policies titled incurring expenses while conducting city business. I was hoping to shorten those titles, but our city attorney really wanted to keep those titles to be consistent with some state regulations. So, the background is, is that the city council adopted its travel policies and its business expense policies in February of twenty-two-four and since that adoption, city staff have identified several sections that needed clarification. For example, the city's annual city legislative action days conference hosted by the Association of Washington Cities, right now, we pay for just the single dinner and this would allow us to pay up to two dinners. Other policies that are being clarified would include being able to use ride share services in order to transfer between locations, hotels and airports. So, we're just looking to clarify the city's policies. There's an entire list in the agenda packet of the changes, along with a legislative market version and I'm available to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right. Turn to the council. Councilmember Fulter, do you have your flag up?
Yes, I did, thank you. I did read the part about the transportation and the addition of Uber, et cetera, Lyft, all that kind of stuff. There's another form of transportation in DC especially that I personally have used to get to the Capitol and et cetera. Yeah, scooters. And I, I know how to distinguish between I'm going out on the mall at night between, or I'm going to a meeting. So, how do we make it so we can actually put in our receipts for that?
I would actually, based upon a recommendation from our insurance pool, recommend that city representatives not use line scooters, particularly if they're going to be reimbursed just because of the inherent danger of that form of transportation, particularly in an urban area.
It's really too bad because we can get there faster on the line. So, I understand and I guess I won't turn in those receipts, but I will meet you all at the Capitol.
Your personal choices.
Kyle, that means you can't take your, your rollerblades either. Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
I just wanna say whoever initiated these changes, bravo, because it's clearly all cost cutting and, and just logical, common sense changes, so whoever, whoever that was, thank you very much. I appreciate the diligence.
You have a team of city staff members who were working with these policies and brought forward a recommendation to come back in and do some amendments. So, thank you to city staff.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Beaumont, I think your flag was about ready to go up?
Yes, and I'll go ahead and make the motion. I agree this, I read through this and it was just, you know, common sense and really appreciated, so thank you so much, except for the scooters. All right. I move to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash zero zero five, repealing the city's existing finance policy titled Travel Status Policy Number Twenty-two-four dash zero zero two and adopting the Travel Status Policy Number Twenty-two-five dash zero zero five.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Walker. I heard his second, even though you should've said Walker's seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Councilmember Hanford, your, your flag was up? Nope, okay. Councilmember Beaumont.
I'll move, move on here, okay. I move to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash zero zero six, repealing the city's existing finance policy titled Incurring Expenses While Conducting City Business, Policy Number Twenty-two-four dash zero zero three and adopting the Incurring Expenses While Conducting City Business, Policy Number Twenty-two-five dash zero zero six.
There you go. All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Hanford. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, everybody. All right. All right, council, council member reports. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's old news, but the groundbreaking at Curryview Park, I had full intention of being there for that and was in a work meeting that continued to go on and on that I could not get out of, so, otherwise I would've been there. But I love seeing the transformation as I drove by this evening, again, just, it's looking beautiful and very excited for getting that completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulter.
Excellent segue because I had a report from a four-year-old neighbor who, who said the words, and I quote, I wrote it down, Monroe is more beautifully now. And, and that was because our, our people have been, you know, trimming back everything and she was, she's very impressed, so.
Nice.
Monroe's more beautifully now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wrote down beautiful. Okay, not B A U to fold, but Beaumont is what I was writing. That's too funny. Okay. Councilmember Scarborough.
Nice to see the progress on the sidewalk downtown, the renovation on the two buildings so we can get the sidewalk back.
Yeah.
Thank you for whoever's pushed that.
Awesome, thank you. Councilmember Gamble, online.
No report.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker.
Lake Tide Park looks amazing because of the new wood chips and repairs to a few pieces of equipment, so thanks to parks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
I got a few things tonight, good times. One, I was curious who, if it, the state is responsible for highway cleanup on Highway Two and if they're also responsible for the, the bathroom that's down at the boat launch at Lewis Street. It's really, really shabby. It's super gross. So, I was just curious if maybe you would be able to direct somebody to get ahold of the stage or something along those lines. And a couple of weeks ago, I think it was Councilmember Scarborough that kinda brought up that, and I don't know what your exact words were, but the downtown area seems to be getting a little bit more gritty to me. I spend a lot of time downtown, I walk downtown a lot and some of the things, I know that police chief earlier in the year had said that crime was down. Me personally, my family this year has had a stolen wagon, a stolen mountain bike from Park Place Middle School, a large copper sculpture from our yard, totaling about fifty-five-hundred dollars of personal loss for my family. So, it doesn't seem like it's down and the crime is down in the downtown area. And just some other things that have gone on, yesterday, I think, there were tools stolen on Powell Street. I've got, I've got quite a list, it's unfortunate. And then, I was coming home the other morning from dropping the kids off at school and got onto, what's the street right by Fremont, that Triangle Street was coming on to Blakely. There was a gentleman there in hospital pants with his privates hanging out, so I was like, so I spun around, see if I could catch him and then I was gonna call nine-one-one just to kinda see what was going on. Cold morning, so I think it would be, you would know whether or not you had your privates hanging out. So, I've just been noticing more things like that, kind of in our downtown core, so just so everybody can kinda be aware of. I feel like we're heading in the right path and things have continually gotten much, much better. I think we still have a long way to go and those are just some of my concerns down. I brought up a little bit with the, the boarded up businesses on Main Street and just kinda the atmosphere that is being displayed in the downtown area and how people just kinda feel like maybe they can do that.
Okay.
I am not happy about the scooter thing, so that, those things are so fun and I'm getting, and I'm getting really, really, really good on them. So, little bit, I don't know, a little bit of humor there. There was a thing that happened a couple of weeks ago at the federal level that I feel like I need to bring up. Honestly, it really pissed me off. So, when now President Trump had an attempted assassination, I brought that up and said that is not how our government is supposed to function. That is not what we are here to do. Couple of weeks ago, Representative Sarah McBride was intentionally called Mister instead of Missus. She's transgender US representative out of Delaware. And it pissed me off because the only reason it was done was to be mean and I hope that our constituents, staff, never see that up on the dais. I think it was US Representative Self out of Texas. And like, you may not agree with it, you may disagree with it, you may not understand it, you may find it confusing and not necessarily agree with everything that Representative McBride has to say. But she was put there by her constituents, she was voted into, into office and to show that kind of disrespect up on the dais, I think is a really, really poor example of how our government should function. And I would say shame on Congressman Self of Texas for approaching it that way. And yeah, it, as you can tell, like it fired me up, I was pretty angry about it and I just don't think we need to address each other like that. I think we need to be respectful, maybe confusing, maybe something you don't agree with or disagree with, but it's something that, that we need to handle with respect.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. And somebody will follow up with you on some of the items that you brought up this, this evening about the downtown, just get some more info. Thank you. And then lastly, Councilmember Beaumont.
Gosh, thank you. All right, gosh, let's see. Last week at seven AM, I was on the advisory board, French is, I believe it's the Flood Control District, yes, with Julie. So, that was fun, that was her first meeting and those are what about fifteen-minute meetings, but still really important to be there. I think some of you probably were on the town hall with the twelfth district town hall a few days ago, it was last week, and that was really always interesting to me to hear what kind of questions are asked of Gaynor, Steele and now Burnett. So, that was very, very interesting and just been enjoying the parks, really are also enjoying watching Curryview Park take shape and kinda wondering, I did have a question about when the corner, the old play structure is going to be removed or, you know, what the plan is for that corner, I was just kinda curious. I was actually going to ask about that tonight. And last but not least, here is my, my appeal to all of you to please attend Monroe Historical Society presentation at the library, April nineteenth. It is on the history and development of the Evergreen Fair and we have Snohomish County archaeologist and historian Gretchen Kaler who's going to be presenting. So, it's one of our quarterly programs we do and would love the community to come out and bring questions and memories of the fair. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. We'll make certain we get some information to the council about when the, the existing play structure will be taken down. Yep, thank you. Councilmember Walker.
Mayor, could you potentially organize a trip for the city council or whoever might be interested to do a tour, visit to the prison, being that it's our largest employer in town?
I'll talk with staff about doing that.
Thank you.
Yep. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. That jogged my memory that I would love to have a tour set up at the new, the new city property, the old bank by the post office.
Okay.
I think it's been done and I wasn't able to make the first one.
Okay.
So, I would love to, to see that.
Okay, somebody from staff will be in contact with you to set that up.
Thank you.
Okay, cool. All right, next item on the agenda is staff and department reports. Unless anybody has any questions for staff, I'll just refer to the items in the packets. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next one then, which is mayor and administrative reports, Administrator Knight on extended agenda, item thirteen point one.
There's no meeting scheduled for April, April first.
There's no meeting scheduled for April 1st, and that's not an April Fool's Day. Not an April Fool's. It's the reason why we're not launching the brand on April 1. We're doing it March 30. I don't want people to be confused. For the business meeting scheduled for April 8th, we will have, excuse me, we will have a Public Safety Committee meeting that night. We have a couple of items on the agenda. We have fee schedule adjustments, public safety fees, and the community needs assessment coming to the Public Safety Committee meeting. That starts at 6:00 PM, and then at 7:00 PM, the regular council business meeting. On the consent agenda right now, we have the accounts payable, meeting minutes, and payroll, and then transportation impact fee adoption with Scott Peterson and Jacob Roberts. We have new business, which will be motel voucher budget amendments with Rachel Adams, and ordinance amending Section 4.10 to authorize the city council to adopt general rules of procedure with Jody Wyckoff, a resolution for boards and commission and committee rules of procedure, and then the transportation impact fees, and then department reports.
All right. Any questions on the extended agenda, folks? All right. Saying none, go ahead and move on to the city administrator report, item 13.2.
Thank you. Just want to bring attention to the Main Street planters and thank those members of our business community and our residents for investing in those planters. This was a program that Patrick Doherty has gotten started with our downtown merchants, along with Teresa Willard and Diane Forth from the Garden Club. Each business has donated $100 towards having seasonal color in those downtown planters, and we have created acknowledgement plaques and recognition on social media. So I know I heard from Patrick earlier this evening saying that the downtown businesses that have invested in those were given recognition, but I'll also do that this evening. I have a list, and those include A Different Path, Monroe Laundry, Fairway Mortgage, Better Built Masonry, Sugar Bell Photography, Garden and Situ, Diane and Richard Forth, and others who have asked not to be named.
All right. Any questions for the city administrator? Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
I was wondering, Deborah, who creates the posts for the Explore Monroe Facebook page?
That would be Patrick Doherty, along with, I believe, we have a consultant that's helping with those.
Okay. If I had a question about one of those posts, should I just contact Patrick directly or go through you?
You could come through me.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. The last, oh, sorry, the last item I have is just a recognition of the upcoming flower crawl. And again, this is an effort that is being pulled together by the downtown merchants, along with some support from Patrick, who has been organizing those meetings. So great to see that merchants group coming together and doing an event outside of having the chamber organize it. So if you're interested, it looks like an extremely fun event. You go around to each business, and you get a flower, and at the end, you have an entire bouquet, and that's something then that you can share with family or friends.
All right. Any other questions? No questions about the third bullet? Second word?
Did I type something wrong?
Acknowledgment plagues. It's okay.
Oh, plagues. That's a Q instead of a G.
I know.
It's been typos all evening.
I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm just, it's been a long day.
Oops-a-daisy. It got through the, it got through the.
Oh, did it? You just switched it.
It got through the filter.
You don't know.
AI can't save me from everything.
All right. Sounds good. Deborah, thank you. All right, so just some quick reports from me. This morning, I was working out, got a message from Deborah about, so the Senate, the state Senate went ahead and put together a transportation package, which still includes the preliminary design and the land acquisition for State Route 522 to occur by fiscal, the end of fiscal year 2027. Okay, this isn't building 522, it's just the preliminary work, it's purchasing the property, it's what's necessary for it to be shovel-ready. All right. The word that I received this morning was that the House, the state House, decided to bring forward its transportation budget. The House is not funding State Route 522. They are leaning into projects that are, quote, shovel-ready. I suddenly saw a flash in front of my eyes 11 years ago when I, as a new mayor, learned that 522 was in the governor's budget, but because of politics, it ended up getting pulled out of the transportation package because some folks didn't want to increase a tax in order to be able to fund the system. And so the result was, we then ended up paying for a gas tax and did not benefit at all from that gas tax. I was concerned this morning, when I had heard already about an increase in taxes and fees, that we again would be finding ourselves in a position where we are paying for something that we're not getting. And so I felt compelled today to head down to Olympia. Right after lunch today, I went down to Olympia. Both of our consultants were there to meet with me, and they went ahead and were able to get meetings with me and Senator Gaynor, Representative Steele, Representative Burnett, and Representative Lowe's legislative aide, Mary. They were able to get me on to speak. From what I could tell, I was the only locally elected official that was physically there. There were a number of mayors from cities that were closer than where I had to start my day in Seattle, and certainly closer than Monroe, that just called in. When they called in, they read a document, and then they were done. The people that were there came in and read a document, and I do thank Liam for putting together a document for me to read, but I did not read it. So I went and decided that any written comments I had, I could go ahead and give to them, and instead I made eye contact with each of them and shared my concern about 522 being moved in the House bill to a future date. I don't believe that it even has a date, but a future date. I find that highly unacceptable. The people that spoke before me, because I was like number 31 that spoke, the people that spoke before me talked about shovel-ready projects for multimodal, pedestrian, bicycles, and I value all of these things, but people who live here in Monroe are just trying to get down 522 to the East Side. Firefighters who need to respond to scenes are just trying to get through traffic. Our kids are trying to get to school, and we have other emergency providers that are trying to also use the corridor. I expressed to them that they can talk about these shovel-ready projects, but the fact of the matter is, is that we've been working on 522 since the 1990s, and that we needed them to finish what they started. What I can say is this, the representatives that were in the room actually made eye contact with me. They didn't look at other people that were looking down reading. I would encourage each of you to go ahead and submit comments, asking them to at least keep, it's just preliminary design and land acquisition where it is, because I promise you, they will continue to kick this down the road. They will not finish 522 unless the city and the county and others stay committed to this. I spoke for 75 seconds. I feel that I was heard. Gaynor and Steele, when I met with them, acknowledged exactly what I feel, which is that we need to be finishing corridors, not just special pet projects. We need to be finishing corridors that connect communities, not just ribbon-cutting in more urbanized areas where you're essentially redeveloping a transportation system. We need to be connecting communities. So I would ask that each of you really consider submitting comments, and if you have a chance, because some of you have stronger relationships with our elected officials down in Olympia, to contact them. And as I have said before, when people are running for frickin' office, that should be a litmus test as to whether or not you're going to be supporting them. Do you support 522? Will you do everything you can? Going back to the whole thing about not getting 522 done 11 years ago because somebody didn't want to vote for a gas price increase, you know, I'll say this, I was raised in a family where I was told you can't get something for nothing. But I tell you what, I don't want to pay for something and get nothing. That's exactly what happened, and I don't want that happening to this community again. That's why it was important for me to drive down there. I do thank our mayor pro tem for taking the beginning of this meeting, and I do really appreciate Jim and Luke for the work that they did to get me in touch with people on such short notice. And I thank you for talking with me this morning, and Liam for coordinating stuff. I felt very well supported down in Olympia. I have one more item to report, but I'll go ahead and acknowledge Councilmember Scarborough.
What you're referring to, I totally agree with what you have to say, and I can tell you're passionate about it, but I also saw the increases that they plan on, about 24 cents a gallon and.
I think it's over a period of time, and I don't have the specifics.
Seems to me that's what was in the news, and then other fees, but that one caught my eye, so understood and agree.
Yeah. The one concern, again, whatever the numbers are, if the majority is going to vote in favor of something, and if people are just going to take a stand that in principle, where I'm not going to vote for something, you already know we're going to pay for it. If you end up not playing ball, if you end up not compromising, they may cut you out because that's what happened 11 years ago. And that's the only thing that I would caution. You're still going to pay for it, because the majority is there to pay for it. The question is, are you going to get something for it? And so that's my caution. For me, and I understand where you're coming from, for me, Senator Gaynor, Representative Steele expressed support to work with the proposal, because I think they understand the pragmatism of needing to be part of that in order to get projects done, both in our community but also on the East Side, and I did appreciate that. But I, and I do thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember. Thank you. Anything else before I move on to my last item? Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you. I just really appreciate you going down there today, and I really wanted to give a shout-out to Liam. You know, I'm at work all day, as many of us are, and I try and check my city email periodically. He flagged it, high importance. Boom, open it up. Oh, my gosh. And I didn't have time to pull my head together in the middle of my workday and come up with something, you know, with all the details in it. I put my own touch on it before I sent in my written testimony, but thank you, Liam, because you had it all right there, ready to go. It was very, very easy to weigh in, and I even called you and asked for a little bit of advice. Thank you for doing such a great job. And Mayor Thomas, thank you for going down there. I was outraged as well, and just, we have got to put the pressure on. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw two other flags go up. I think it was Councilmember Foulter and then Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Foulter?
Yeah, I also wanted to say thank you to both of you. Thank you for going. I'm glad you had the opportunity to go. I only had the opportunity to do a written, so I do appreciate Liam and his quick thinking to get us all. I didn't use your wording either, but I appreciate it. But anyway, it is very important for us to just remember and to, we're just going to have to be in everybody's face, which is what we have had to be on this issue for a long time, but thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Same, same thing. Thank you for going. Thank you for the notes. Helped me submit my comments in writing, so.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Fisher and then Councilmember Walker.
Yeah, just ditto. Exact same thing that you guys are saying.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
Ditto. Thank you for driving down there. Thank you.
I opted to. I didn't need to, but I opted to because I was a little early. I shouldn't. I wouldn't have had to have paid for parking, yeah.
My risk management tackles are up.
You're not taking this from me, right? Okay. All right. Next item, I will be, I was invited to dinner and also to meet and talk with one of our communities here in town. It's the Islamic Center of Monroe. I'll be doing that tomorrow night. We now have both the mosque and also the Islamic Center of Monroe. So we've got two different entities here that are of the Islamic faith here in our general city, so I'll be going and breaking bread with them tomorrow night. The last item is State of the City, April 8th, right?
Yes.
Yes. I mentioned that because it occurs to me April 1st, we're not having a meeting next week. So I'll be delivering the State of the City. It'll be my final State of the City that I will be delivering, and I encourage folks to be there if you're able to and interested. So anyway, I think that that's all that I have this evening. Unless there is additional items, we will be adjourned. Saying no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody. Thank you for your service.